The time is now five thirty-one, and I would like to call to order the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four Academic Achievement Committee meeting for school year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I am Dr. Zipporah Miller, Chair of this committee and the District Five Representative for the Prince George's County Board of Education. If everyone could please introduce themselves, starting with the Vice Chair of this committee, and then the committee members, any visiting board members, Prince George's County Public Schools administrative staff, and then the board office in that honor. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Pamela Boozer-Struther. I'm the Vice Chair of the Committee and the District Three Board of Education Member.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brendan Jackson, District Six.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Judy White, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening. I'm Rashin Davis, Chief of School Support and Leadership.
Dr. Faison, do you want to come off and introduce your team?
Sure. A good evening. I'm Dr. Liz Faison, the Associate Superintendent of Student Services, and we have quite a team of cell partners who have joined the discussion tonight. I'm really pleased to start introductions with my director, and then I'll let her bounce it to the next individual.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Tisa Holly, Director of Student Services. I'll pass it on to Amy Wiley.
Good evening, everyone. Amy Wiley, Physical Education Instructional Supervisor.
Jody.
Good evening, everyone. Jody Favazza, Port Towns Elementary Kindergarten Teacher. I'm going to pass it to Dr. Coes.
Evening, everyone. I'm Jamela Coles, Director of Teacher Leadership Programs at Mount Holyoke College.
Dr. Snell.
Hi, everyone. I am the Associate Director of the Center for Educational Innovation and Improvement. I'm representing myself and Dr. Sagon Eubanks, and we are working with Dr. Faison and the Student Services Team, but I'll talk more about that later, on fostering and supporting social emotional learning supports in the district.
Dr. Thompson.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kevin Thompson. I'm the Coordinating Supervisor with the Office of Community Schools.
I believe that's our state.
Thank you. I think Ms. Lopez, you?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Rosa Lopez. I'm Board Administrative Secretary.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, C, Board Member LaSae Frazier, just join us. You want to introduce yourself? Good evening.
Good afternoon. I am Madeline LaSae Frazier, and I'm very happy to be here.
Great. Thank you for every, thank you for being here. Ms. Lopez, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Zipporah Miller?
Present.
Ms. Boozer-Strather?
Present.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mrs. LaSae Frazier?
Present.
Mr. Murray? We have quorum, Madame Chair.
Thank you so much. We have a quorum, so we will go on to the adoption of the agenda. May I have a, may I have a motion to adopt the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting agenda?
I move to adopt the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four Academic Achievement Committee meeting agenda.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Move to the approval of the minutes from February twelfth. May I have a motion to approve the February twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting minute?
I approve the April, I'm sorry, the February twelfth minutes from our last Academic Achievement meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is adopted. We have one registered, registered speaker. Ms. Lopez, is she in the waiting room?
She's not here yet, Dr. Miller.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to move to three point O in our agenda, and I will let the Dr. White and team finish their presentation and ask have questions before we add her on. That way, we don't have to interrupt the team midstream if she comes in. All right, so we will move to discussion item three point O, and I will now yield the floor to Dr. Judith White to present her team and this evening's agenda.
Good evening, everyone. First, I am here along with Dr. Davis. Actually, her team, my team, her team is actually presenting. I do have a team member on this team. So in November, this team came before you and talked about their plans for a lot of social emotional learning work that they were going to do throughout the year through different avenues. So today, we have an opportunity to hear from them, to hear how it landed out in Prince George's County Public Schools. You've already heard just from those who've introduced themselves, that we've had university partners with us, so you can see that their stretch is wide across many schools, community schools, to ensure that this work is moving. So with that, Dr. Davis, is there anything you'd like to add to introduce your team before I turn it over to Dr. Faison?
I bet you're thinking about it.
Nope, you did a good job.
Awesome. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Faison, who will walk us through, and her team will walk us through the amazing work that they've done so far this year.
Good afternoon, and thank you all so much for another opportunity to come back now and talk about our progress and any outcome data that we have to share around all of the wonderful work around social emotional learning that has taken place in our school district. And our team has introduced themselves, but each of them will have a segment of this presentation this afternoon to talk about their work and their role as they provide services to the district, or they have been a participant in what our school system has been doing as it relates to social emotional learning. So I just really want to start basically with framing social emotional learning just for everybody to level set. Our school system utilizes the CASL framework as it relates to social emotional learning. This is what we teach our students. This is the framework that we utilize to teach and train our administrators, our educators, and our staff. And basically, it has five components that are extremely broad, that provide information to our students around what self-awareness looks like, how we can help students self-manage, what social awareness components look like, our relationship skills, as well as responsible decision-making. And so this is the framework that we utilize. So tonight, we just really want to take some time to go through our journey, our journey as we have launched social emotional learning activities, educational activities for our staff, as well as what we've been doing with our students. And then you'll also hear from our university partners as it relates to graduate classes that we've rolled out to our staff. March is social emotional learning month, and so we want to talk about what are some of the efforts that we have made this month as it relates to that work? And then you'll also hear about what's happening now and perhaps what we will be doing in the future. We do have a five-year plan, and we have really only just begun to really do what we call cell saturation and PGCPS. And so I'll take a moment and just speak about our Mount Holyoke partnership and work that we've done with St. Elizabeth University. We now have seventy-seven certified staff in PGCPS. And so what you see visible are just a few or cadre of our team who are certified in social emotional learning. And what this particular chart does is it tells you the breakdown of the seventy-seven. We call this our super cell team. And so through Mount Holyoke University, and you'll hear from Dr. Coes a little later in this presentation, through that partnership with Mount Holyoke, we had forty-six employees, principals, assistant principals, instructional lead teachers, school counselors, psychologists, you name it. A number of employees who went through three to four months of training to become certified in social emotional learning. Additionally, we rolled out a leadership cohort that led, that was a leadership in social emotional learning and character development with St. Elizabeth. And so during that team, that is our district team, that will help to plan and roll out the work, and as you see, just a few of the items that that team is responsible for, developing principal training, our communication campaign, working with the Office of Professional Learning, putting together tools, and also crafting that five-year plan and making sure that we're on task for that. So this is the seventy-seven that represent the super cell team that we have in PGCPS, and I want to yield a few minutes to see how the immersion of social emotional learning work is actually occurring in our schools. And so our next speaker is Jody Favazza. She's a kindergarten teacher, and she has taken several of our courses, and she's implementing the work in the district. And so I'm yielding now to Jody.
Good evening, members of the board and esteemed colleagues. Thank you for the honor of allowing me to speak on behalf of one of my favorite topics. I became across social emotional learning in twenty twenty during my first year teaching in PG County. It has since become one of my greatest passions. During the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the Department of Special Education needed a wellness presenter for their after-school clinics. Due to my love of SEL, my mentor, Montessa Lee, automatically thought of me, and I continue to present monthly at these events. Later that year, she also asked me to present for PEEP two point O. The following year, when the county created our certification program through Mount Holyoke, my SEIS, Laron Martin, came to me and said I needed to sign up. This past year, I also had the opportunity to participate in both the asynchronous SEL program and the SEL micro-journaling project, which furthered my SEL knowledge. At my previous school, I was able to create an SEL group for my special education students who needed behavioral support, and they began coming to school more often and started enjoying being students. Many students in my previous school, even those I did not directly work with, became impassioned about learning due to my SEL skills, and would start to behave and pay attention in class in exchange for the opportunity to come read with me during downtime. This year, I had the opportunity to move to a kindergarten teacher position at Port Towns Elementary School, one of our Title One community schools. While I did not understand it at the time, I was placed into the best classroom for me. Unfortunately, while nationally, one in seven students come to school with some type of trauma, this number is greater since COVID in Title One schools and in suburban communities like ours. This became even more obvious to me when out of less than one percent of our students chosen for shop with a cop based on trauma and financial need, thirty percent came from my class alone. I knew in that moment that everything I was doing was essential. When students come to school with trauma, if social emotional learning is not taught, nothing is learned. According to Mental Health America, trauma can undermine many skills that are crucial for learning, including the development of language and communication skills, the ability to organize and remember new information, and reading comprehension. Students coping with trauma may experience intrusive thoughts or flashbacks that prevent them from paying attention in class, studying, or focusing during timed assignments. School-related trauma often leads to school avoidance, leaving the most vulnerable students behind academically. Trauma also negatively impacts young people's sense of self, making it difficult for those students to feel motivated, proud, and engaged in their learning. In fact, I heard it summed up best in the statement, "SEL is not a part of the plate, it is the plate." If we do not fund SEL, we cannot fund academics, or we are throwing away our money. This must become a crucial element to our school day for all students, especially in our Title One schools. In my classroom, SEL is infused into almost everything we do. In the morning, we start by singing and dancing to greet each other, followed by morning circle where we review our class rules and our day, send positive energy to our friends that are absent, and learn about each other. I remind my students frequently that they are my fish, my friendly, important, smart humans, and I give them space to work through their issues. My students know they are loved for who they are as individuals, and they are safe in my classroom, so they have made great progress academically. One student who has become my greatest teacher came to school on the first day scared of strangers and eloping often. The second day of school, he physically attacked me when I prevented him from running into traffic during dismissal. However, while other teachers said I should move him to another class, I knew this was not what was best for him. He and I spoke, and I told him I would never give up on him. He slowly started joining in class activities more often, and now he has made great academic progress and has become one of the most popular students in the class because I was willing to see him for who he was and meet him where he is. This is one of the many examples of how my SEL strategies have impacted my students. I have heard from many parents how grateful they are for the difference I've made for my students. Within my building, one can also feel the effects of my SEL training. Teachers come to me often to learn new strategies. One teacher who has been teaching for sixteen years told me how grateful she is for working with me because she has learned so much about, more about SEL this year. I've been able to present workshops to the teachers, and now we are working on creating a monthly teacher SEL group to celebrate our successes and learn new SEL strategies to use in our classrooms. I also worked with one of our school counselors to create SEL Day, which the students have stated was one of the best parts of the year. Teachers have stated that when they see me, they see SEL. Staff have stated they feel SEL when they walk in my classroom. My principal has even told me she is amazed by the positive differences she has seen in my classroom since day one. Outside of the school, I've been asked to present SEL in other schools in our county and serve as a mentor for our Mount Holyoke program. I've also had the opportunity to present, represent PGCPS internationally through my SEL presentation at the National Association for the Education of Young Children Annual Conference. I've also been recruited by SEL for U.S., a grassroots organization for the promotion of SEL to help create the SEL for Maryland chapter. I would love to move into an SEL position within the county to spread what I have started in my classroom even further. For all of these reasons and so many more, it is essential that SEL be a part of our county's work so that we may allow for more academic achievement. Let's build futures together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jody, for those examples of how cell is working for the students in your classroom. I'll now pass it off to Dr. Tisa Holly to talk about our social emotional learning course that we develop for educators.
Thank you, Dr. Faison. Good evening, everyone, again. And so as Dr. Faison mentioned, we were able to launch our first cell educators course, and it was a self-paced course, and we had a total of nine hundred twenty-six educators to complete the course, not just sign up, but to complete the course. And so the next few slides that we have here just captures kind of like their sentiments as a result of taking the course. As you'll be able to see in the first chart, that this was fifty percent said that this was their first time taking a cell course, and then the larger percentage said that they felt as though the course was helpful in allowing them to be able to understand the cell competencies. Then our next slide shows that approximately eighty percent said that they would be interested in going the next step and becoming certified, certified cell instructors by taking the longer course. And so we have voices from the field, and so we're going to share one of those videos at this time.
Hello. My name is Forrest Turetsky, and I just finished completing the social emotional learning course. I really want to thank you guys. I found this course to be extremely helpful and supportive with not only identifying the needs of my students when it comes to social emotional learning, but also responding to them in a way that's going to be effective, in a way that I believe that they will benefit from. We do have social emotional learning lessons that are supposed to be built into each day. We call it just us time. It happens at the beginning of the day where we're supposed to, as educators, prepare thoughtful lessons that would be thought-provoking for students to encourage discussion and for them to develop skills with empathy and compassion and emotional awareness for others. And after completing this course, I feel that the lessons I'll be able to design for my students will be much more effective, meaningful, and impactful. Again, I want to thank you guys, and I look forward to potentially completing more courses like this one in the future. So I'll be looking, looking out. If more courses are available, please let me know or let all of us know. I hope you all have a wonderful day, and thank you for listening to my video.
I'd like to introduce now Dr. Jean Snell from the University of Maryland, who supports our social emotional learning cell academy, where we are working on looking at the data to see if what we're doing is impactful so that we can determine if we're doing the right thing and if we need to replicate what it is that we're doing or make adjustments. So, Dr. Snell, I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Faison. It's such a privilege to be here tonight with the Student Services Team, who I have come to have such esteem for and so enjoy working with. So my role is a little bit different, or our role with University of Maryland than Mount Holyoke. We are not so much the people, we are not the people who have helped grow the SEL skill and capacity of educators in the district or led those courses. Instead, we have facilitated a networked improvement community, trying to better understand with Student Services and other members of the district leadership teams about how the initiatives that are underway are, you know, are going. What can we learn from the work that's already underway so that we can, you know, the district has better data at their fingertips to help spread, scale, and disseminate? So the networked improvement community that I am co-facilitating is working from a theory of improvement that if we build adult capacity through the SEL Academy and we increase their capacity and their skills and their, their understanding, that that will in turn change how interactions with students go on a day-to-day basis and how educators in the district are able to attend to those students, which in turn will fundamentally lead to improved SEL results and ultimately student outcomes. So the cell saturation, which is the goal, is through the adult practice and the adult educators at every level, which is where the SEL Academy has such vital importance. Next slide. So how do we begin to understand, you know, what the impact of the SEL Academy is, which has such powerful content and can shape educators' capacity in really important ways? Well, we invited SEL Academy grads to engage in a little PDSA cycle where they would microjournal. And pretty simply, we wanted to find out, were they building SEL lessons or mini lessons into their, or exercises into their lessons? And which of those five CASL domains were they kind of organizing their lesson around? And was there any way in which they were also engaging with their colleagues? So we did this over a four-week, or actually a two-week period where we asked them to microjournal at least a couple times a week over a three-week period. This was last spring, and we did it again this fall. And we had a really strong response. The SEL Academy grads really wanted to engage with us and help the district better understand how they're bringing this new learning forward into their classrooms. Next slide. So you can see here, and Dr. Faison, please chime in, or Dr. Holly, what the results of these microjournal data revealed, which had to do with that folks reported they definitely were conducting SEL activities on the days that they were micro-journaling, and even in some cases also using this new knowledge with their colleagues. Next slide. And they were really also showing us kind of where the emphasis was with the strategies that they were really focusing on, and a lot of it was around self-awareness, followed by self-management and relationship skills. So again, we can start to track which aspects of the CASL domains are really the ones that are being addressed most fully as they're bringing this new skill and awareness forward. Next slide. And you can see here what the benefits to these SEL Academy grads were, not just for participating in the actual SEL Academy, but ultimately also for participating in this opportunity to do the micro-journaling. It was kind of like they got to be meta about their own practice, which encouraged them even more in bringing these new learning forward. Next slide. So I think, you know, many of you well know what PDSA is about and how we went about engaging in the short-cycle test. I've already described how we collected the data from the micro-journals that was all voluntary. Everybody that was participating in this did it because they wanted to be part of this collective learning, which was so exciting. And then next slide. With the study part. So again, here's another glimpse into some of the data that we were able to collect, and in PDSA-ing, we're able to make predictions, and then from the data, see what happens. So eighty percent of the participants in our little micro-journaling test saw that they were in fact engaging in SEL-related activities and the domains that they were focused on. And there were some folks that weren't able to participate all the way through as they hoped because we also know that life very much happens. But the folks that did really found it beneficial, and it really opened up a picture for us of how this SEL Academy is getting implemented and carried forward. Next slide. So we're really excited that we've been able to be here with you all, helping the district just again have a window in to how this really important investment is in fact getting carried forward. So we are super excited about being this kind of co-learning partner and really want to continue to see how all these investments in SEL saturation are going to continue to have real impact for students and for educators. I think that's the end of my time, Dr. Faison.
It is. Thank you, Dr. Snell. And I just wanted to chime in to say that we meet with the University of Maryland quite frequently. There are a number of partners across our school district that touch so many offices that really look at our cell work as a part of our learning recovery and what we can do to support students. As Dr. Snell referenced, we had two different PDSA cycles where first time we had thirty teachers who were certified and who had participated in our learning, went through the process, and then we had forty teachers to, well, we had six the first time with thirty entries, and then we had fifteen teachers the second time with forty entries, taking a more active role in it. And then ultimately, what we see here is looking at our culture and climate survey. This year, we saw that seventy-five percent of our educators in the classroom felt confident in their ability to incorporate social emotional learning. And this is something that we wanted to study to see if what we're doing in our role, rolling out social emotional learning across the county and teaching teachers about the theory of social emotional learning and how to integrate that into any of their content, no matter what their content area is, do they feel confident in being able to teach social emotional learning and integrate that into what they're doing with students in our classrooms? And so we have quite a ways to go in ensuring that all of our educators are really trained in cell, but looking at the data, we're really, really encouraged that teachers are feeling far more competent in being able to incorporate this in their own. competent in being able to incorporate this in their own level. So I also want to introduce Amy Wiley. Amy Wiley is Supervisor of Physical Education. She has taken almost all of what we have offered from Mount Holyoke becoming certified, with St. Elizabeth becoming certified as a district leader, taking our self-paced course during the micro journaling. And now she's working with Mount Holyoke as we rolled out another layer of training for our educators. And I'm going to stop and let Amy Wiley talk about how she's implementing SEL in our school district and how it's working for her and her constituent.
Thank you, Dr. Faison. And thank you for inviting me to be here this evening. So yes, I have done, I think, everything that you have had to offer. So I just want to share how thankful I am for those opportunities. I feel like especially the first course, the in-person intensive helped me refine my practice and my interactions with individuals. You know, we've always had a section in our curriculum for social emotional learning based on the CEL components. We've added SEL components to all of our professional developments. And I regularly find myself doing a self-check when I'm interacting, even in my personal life, even at the grocery store, making sure that I'm aware of my facial expressions, my interactions, you know, especially my patience, you know, checking my patience. But it's been, it really was probably the most rewarding opportunity I've had in the school system. So this past week, I spent the week in Cleveland for our Shape America National Health and Physical Education Professional Development. And every session I attended was based on SEL because I want to be able to bring it back to our, our teachers in, in physical education. And throughout the process of all of this, I also recalled that MSDE created a Health and Physical Education, Social Emotional Learning, based on our standards, a guiding document. So I've really just immersed myself in it to try to bring it back to our colleagues in physical education.
Thank you, Amy. And I will now turn it over to Dr. Tisa Holly and Dr. Kevin Thompson to talk about SEL.
Good evening, everybody. Again, Dr. Faison, I appreciate you keep speaking that doctor into existence for me. But I had the pleasure of serving with the St. Elizabeth cohort. And one of our culminating activities that we had to do was come up with a way in which we were going to have SEL live within Prince George's County Public Schools. So during the time in which I was enrolled in the class, I was still a principal at the moment. And one thing that always kept coming to mind is how do we get the kids to buy into this? As the adults, we are building our capacity around it, but how do we get our kids to buy into it? So one of the culminating activities that we came up with in my group specifically was our, was to have our students come up with an SEL logo contest. As our teacher, Ms. Jody, said earlier, SEL should be something that is not only seen and heard, but it should live. And we decided to allow, allow our SEL to live through the logo contest and have the students within Prince George's County be the ones to design the logo that we would use for our SEL representation throughout our school district. So what we did was, we solicited the support of the student leaders attending our P-grass General Assembly meeting that was held in December of 2023. We decided that we were going to develop a logo contest that was very thorough and specific, that it included the rubric of the specific standards that should be included on their logo, the specific verbiage that their logo should include, the hashtag, all of that good stuff that kids like. Essentially, we were able to incorporate into the logo contest. We ran the ad for about two months, essentially, and we had eighty-four students actually enter the contest. And those students were represented from elementary school as, as, as in the lower grades of kindergarten all the way to our high school students. So God bless their hearts for those little ones who submitted their artwork, which was very interesting. But it was also good. It represented everything about SEL essentially. From there, we were able to narrow down to ten entries as the finalists, according to the rubric that we developed for our SEL contest. And the students at our P-grass meeting in February voted on the ten winners or the three winners, essentially the top three candidates to actually advance to the final round of being selected for our SEL logo contest. And as you can see here are our winners, our first and our second place winner. Our first place winner was Nora Docker from James Madison Middle School. She was a seventh grade student. Nora won a $250 gift card for creating this SEL image that she was able to explain and allow each and every one of the elements of her actual logo to represent what was needed or required according to our SEL rubric. I'm going to pass over to Dr. Holly so she can talk about our second place winner.
And so our second place winner is Ms. Samadi Griffin, who is a twelfth grader. She's actually the SGA president at Gwin Park High School. And so on SEL Day on March the eighth, we were actually able to go to James Madison and present Nora with her, her gift card, balloons, the whole team went to celebrate her and and Samadi wasn't in school on that Friday. So on this Wednesday, we actually will be at Gwin Park High School announcing to a Samadi that she's the second place winner, where she's receiving a $150 Visa gift card. And between the two, their logos will be used. We've developed and even had shirts prepared of which board members you will receive and chiefs will be receiving. One is a T-shirt. Nora's is a T-shirt and then Samadi's is a polo. So whether you're at the Fun Fest or something a little bit more sophisticated, you'll be able to represent SEL. So we're very proud of the work that our students have done and are now able to really begin to brand because of the fact that we have these logos that have been developed by our students.
Thank you so much, team. And I accompanied them to surprise the student in her classroom. And it was an amazing experience. And it's great when we are doing this work to incorporate our students and have their voice in selecting, not just creating what the district is doing and will use, but also having them decide which logo they want to represent SEL. When they see the logo, they know what it is in our school system. And then it was an amazing experience. I think I'm still, you know, floating from just that, that entire experience. And so it was a very PGTPS proud moment for the principal, for the student, for the teacher and for her classmates as well as for Nora. And so I also want to give some time to Dr. Gemilla Coles, who comes to us from Mount Holyoke University, who started the SEL Academy last fall and is now still with us. We meet every Tuesday. And if we can't meet every Tuesday, we meet every other Tuesday. But Dr. Tisa, myself and Dr. Coles and her team with the National Network of State Teachers of the Year, we have been meeting since this work began. It began through the Office of Professional Learning. Dr. Kristi Holden isn't on the line tonight, but she and her team have been extremely instrumental in what we've been able to develop, have funded through ESER and what we've implemented and continue to now implement through our Title IV grant. And so I yield now to Dr. Coles.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, Dr. Faison, for having me here tonight. Mount Holyoke, we started our SEL journey just after COVID and we were awarded a congressionally funded earmark and for our entire region. So basically, our college was charged with doing SEL work. At the time, we had already had a partnership, as Dr. Faison described, with PGTPS through NSD, where we were doing equity work. So through some of those conversations, we talked about what, what, what is next? What does it look like to ensure that we are caring for the whole child? And Dr. Faison brought up SEL. And imagine my surprise when we were knee-deep into SEL work for an entire region. And then Dr. Faison says, and we are thinking about SEL work. We want to make sure that our students are cared for holistically. And we were like, this, this relationship, this partnership is magic. It is pure magic. So what we knew is that when we designed a product, so we wanted to make sure, or when we decided coursework, we wanted to make sure that the coursework was designed by the people who would be in the region that they would be offering the coursework to. So basically, we had to go to PGTPS personnel to say, what does PGTPS need? Because what we know is that PGTPS is nuanced and beautiful and different in so many ways when we're thinking about the populations that are served in PGTPS. So together, in partnership with the staff at PGTPS, we developed this coursework. And we developed it in two different phases. One, the first phase was to ensure that people were fully certified. And we had a three-course sequence to ensure that full certification. That certification was an intense period. We wanted to make sure that not only were they, that they just received a thing that said they were certified, but that they were well-equipped to then go on to train other people to be certified. So we built this Train the Trainer model, which we are now seeing in the, in the current phase, where we have just the asynchronous course that will allow for educators to have grad, to earn graduate credit. We loved, we absolutely loved the work that we did with that first cohort. They were so interesting and vibrant and excited to do the work. And we built that work with nationally award-winning educators. So at Mount Holyoke, we were able to span out to find the best educators in SEL to build the work and then to offer the work to PGTPS. So that's exactly what we did. We were like, we want the best in this space to ensure that we're giving PGTPS exactly what they need. So now currently in our cohort, we have one hundred and thirty-two participants. And the supervising practitioners and the certified mentors are people who went through the full certification process. So not only did we train them, we are now sending them back to train other teachers to ensure that they have the full wraparound services they need. I often get to travel around the nation and talk about various things related to education, but one thing that I hold true and I always take with me is the spirit of PGTPS and the educators there and the work that they are doing in SEL. Because a lot of times educators don't think that SEL can be a part of their classroom. They feel like it is additive, it's something else. But really, as Jody described, it is the plate. That is where you start with the wellness of students. So I get to carry not only their spirit, but the actual work and what they are doing and achieving in PGTPS with me. The partnership is truly a blueprint for what can be done in higher education. Sometimes there's a disjoint between higher education and what's happening on the ground in districts. But this partnership that we have is a blueprint because we are listening to each other. Like we are listening to what is happening in the field. We are looking at the research. And then we are building models for what can be that supports students in the best of ways. And another natural thing that's coming out is the support for educators. So building communities of educators where they have people that they can rely on and talk to who are speaking the same SEL language, not only for their students, but the wellness of the educators too. Because what we know is that students are well when their educators are well. So we are building that to ensure that not only are we taking care of students, but educators are taken care of as well. So we look forward to this continued partnership. We look forward to continuing to train more certified educators so that they can support the other educators in the district.
Thank you, Dr. Coles. And what I will just add as we move to the next slide is that this is the first round of this asynchronous course where our PGTPS employees will be able to get two graduate credits. We will run this again at the conclusion of this particular cohort. So we are continuing to roll out the work, plan the work, be innovative and do something that we've not done before. And then listen and see with the University of Maryland how that's working. And if we're having the outcomes with students, if it's hitting the classroom in a way that we believe it is with the study of the doing, and then make modifications and continue to write grants to fund the things that we want to have happen for our students and for our staff. Before I leave, I just wanted to roll out or to talk about some of the other platforms that are available in schools for students. So our counselors right now are using Quaver SEL in the elementary school. They're also using a curriculum called Sanford Harmony in our elementary schools. We also have Safe School Videos. It is a wellness bundle for students. And there are SEL lessons in it that talk about decision-making and relationship building and resolving conflicts and things like that. We also have Naviance that we now utilize. It is mostly a college readiness platform, but in it is built social emotional lessons, especially at the middle school. This year, we have rolled out second step for middle school because we wanted to provide more lessons that were relative to bullying. And so this is just some of the things that we've rolled out and have in operation now. We really are so, so, so excited. We talk about SEL almost every day in some way, shape or form in our office. And we look forward to continuing the partnerships that we have and rolling out more staff that are certified. Right now, we have thirty-six additional mentors who we are able to give a stipend to through our Title IV grant. And so we look for ways to continue to utilize our staff that are trained as trainers and our certified staff at the district level to come together to plan and to do the work on behalf of the school system. So that's our presentation. And we have quite a few people who are here for, for, available for questions.
Dr. Miller, before you ask for questions, I, I would like to just make a point that many times when we come to the board and you all are asking questions about mental health and just all of the things, I hope what tonight showed you is that while oftentimes we come talking about what's in place, what we don't talk about is how we are training up our own staff. The supports and partnerships that we have with universities to help us get better. When you think about the PDSA model and there, we're taking our own SELs through processes to see if what we're trying to implement works. Building a logo and bringing children into the culture of that. And then you have a supervisor on here who talks about how to take her curriculum and make those adjustments. So it's so many pieces. When you're talking about rolling out something systemic that you've heard tonight that I hope, you know, you can take that in combination with what you hear when we're coming, just talking about numbers around suspension and attendance and those things that, that have to be in place if we're going to keep getting better. You hear a kindergarten teacher talking about it being in practice. So I just want to thank Liz's team. Like if we didn't come and talk about this in this arena, people really would know the extra things that have to happen and be put in place for this work to hit a system of our magnets. And so with that, I yield to your team to begin asking questions.
Well, thank you, Dr. White. You couldn't have said it any better. I was just thinking, you know, the wealth of when you hear one presentation, when we heard that theory that, you know, and then coming and just listening from the different partners from university to the classroom to how it's being implemented, you couldn't be so right. And I do want to thank you because you helped shape this model on how we looked at at the academic committee this year. So I do want to also give you kudos for helping us walk through it so we could see the bigger picture and just not look at it from a myopic view. This really gives us a really holistic sense of how you're not just implementing, but also monitoring implementation. So thank you. So team, we have, we can go to questions now, which I probably want to do, but I want, also want to advise that we have the speaker in the waiting room. So I could do either, we could hear the speaker and then go to questions, or we can go to questions now and then.
I'm okay to hear the speaker first.
Board member Lesiah Fraser and board member Jackson, are you okay with that? And then that way we can.
That's fine.
All right. So Ms. Lopez, can you have the speaker come in and then I will give the information that she needs before she speaks?
Yes, Madam Chair, Ms. Williams, I will promote her again as a panelist. She just need to, needs to accept it. Let me try one. She just need to, needs to accept it. Let me try one.
Is she on, Ms. Lopez?
She is here, but she keeps declining to be promoted as a panelist. So I have tried twice. And I spoke with her this afternoon. Should I try it again? Although she declined.
You want to send her a message, let her know that that's why we're trying to promote her?
Yes, I can do that. Oh, she is here now.
Awesome. Okay. Good evening, Ms. Williams. I'm just going to give you a few, some information, and then we'll let you speak. So you are registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Academic Achievement Committee will listen to your comments. The committee will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. Speakers may not address individuals or issues with profanity or derogatory terms. Speakers are encouraged to use titles rather than names, for example, superintendent, principal, et cetera. Your adherence to these guidelines will enable the public participation process to go smoothly. So at this time, Ms. Williams, we will, we are ready to hear your presentation. Ms. Williams?
Can you hear me?
Hello? Yes.
Okay. I want to speak on the back. I want to speak on the behalf of the academic. My children is at first and in the third grade. I understand they have the after-school program, but it's a cutoff between the second, the second grade to fifth. I could be wrong, going to be third to fifth grade. But one of, the younger child is not excelling the way he is supposed to. I'm, I do get calls such as his behavior. And I did ask, is there an assistant in the classroom with him? I mean, well, with the other, with the main teacher. To my understanding, there's not assistance in the smaller grades. It should be assistant throughout, throughout elementary school because if you got twenty-seven kids in each class, those twenty-seven kids is going to shift to second and third grade. So they should have an assistant. Academic-wise, as far as one child getting tutoring after school, it's the cutoff part. And both of my kids are not doing really well in school. So I am enrolling as much as you have for, I guess, it's a Title II school. Title I, I do hear on the phone call that we are talking about the Title IV. What about the Title I and the Title II community? I'm kind of from that community, and I don't think that Hill Press High is getting much support from the board. I feel like that. I do talk to other parents that have other kids in other jurisdictions. We did come from District of Columbia, so I do know there's a lot of things that can be offered to, to that school. And my kids will be attending for the next six years. We will be in PG County. So I would like for the school to get more, more staying be, me to be obligated to that school. That school is really in a lower poverty. It is. And if I feel like you all need to support that school much more. They got good staff, good teachers, but they don't have enough to work with. And I know they trying, they try, but they, you're not giving them all the materials they need to function. That's the most, that's the most that I can say about it. I mean, it's, it's a lot when it comes to the school. I only got three minutes, so it's not, I can't cover all, but I can cover the academic part.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. If you have any, if you have those comments also in writing, feel free to send them to the board office so that we can also capture them that way.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Have a great rest of the.
You too. Should I stay on?
No, you, if you want to continue in the meeting, you can stay on, on the attendee side. All right, we will continue with item number three point one. So colleagues, any questions? We will adhere to the three-minute, the three minutes and then first round. And then we'll go to second round, and Ms. Lopez will keep time. So if you want to just signify by raising your hand with a hand motion, we'll go from there. Board member Lesiah Frazier?
Thank you, Dr. Miller. I have quite a few questions, but I don't know the best way. So what I think, I'm going to just ask the questions and maybe you can pick and choose which ones, but there's a lot of them. The first one is, is a very basic one. I wanted to know what happens during SEL Day? Like, what are some of the things that are happening during SEL Day? And is it across all grade levels up to high school? That's the first question. I was, what I made a comment that I love, you called this, just it is my fish. So I love it. The other part is nine hundred and twenty-six educators completed. How many of those nine hundred and twenty-six educators will then move on to become certified? And are they already in queue to become certified? Or is there another process that they have to go through in order to be selected to become certified? What is the total cost for this initiative? Is it fully funded at this point? If not, what is needed? Do we have SEL coordinators at different levels throughout the school district? And how are we differentiating between high school versus elementary strategies? And does the training provide differentiation when you become certified? And the other one is, I told you I had a lot. Which group of teachers are seeking the training the most? Is it primary teachers or elementary? Or are they the middle or the high schools? What percentage of the, or teachers are seeking the, the training? And I heard you say that it started out with SRF funds, and we have Title IV. Are there gaps in funding now that the SRF funds are leaving us? And then I like the idea of creating common language in the logo. I think it's, it's a great opportunity for us to continue to grow comfortable with the terminology of SEL. I'm a big SEL proponent. I use it every day at work. But I'm also wondering about the stipend that you offer your, your trainers. What does that look like? So there you go.
All right. So I know they may not be able to answer all of them. So maybe you could do two or three, and then we can come back. And, and that way we can give board member, who's a Strata, an opportunity.
Can we talk about the money first, I guess? I'm really interested in finding out how are we doing the finances for this initiative?
So we wrote this grant into, we wrote part of this work into the Title IV grant as SRF II Sunset. So we provide our mentors a seven hundred and fifty-dollar stipend that will be for the very first time doing that for their service. So they will be assisting with training, providing technical assistance as well as helping to craft lessons across the various grade levels, putting together a toolkit, helping with new teacher induction, bootcamps, professional developments, and those types of things. We have crafted this program for the next level. So we had lots of success, we believe, with the Self-Paced Course. We had twelve hundred registrants to actually register for the course. We placed an e-doctorina. It allowed them to go through the modules on their own. What we did hear from those individuals, those nine hundred, that many of them wanted interaction, not just take the course on their own, but they wanted to have discourse and really talk about the implementing, what they had learned with their students. And so we met again with Mount Holyoke to say, how can we kind of do that? And we crafted that. And so as Dr. Coles referenced, we're having part of our certified staff be supervising practitioners. They will receive two thousand dollars to provide that service. And then we have mentors as well, working with Mount Holyoke, who are just in those courses, helping those of us, because I'm taking a course as well, helping those of us go through the instructional part. And so there, with this Title IV grant, there's a part that goes to the university for tuition. There's a part that also goes to our mentors for their services to others. And so that's a total of about five hundred thousand dollars that we have written into Title IV. And so as Title IV expands, then we will be able to go back and write in another cohort to be certified. So the e-doctorina self-paced course, not as rigorous as a three-course certification. So it just allows our educators to kind of get in where they can fit in. Those who have more time and who have the availability and the interest to be certified, to actually be trained facilitators in the county, we have that level. And for those who want to broaden their knowledge and understanding and be able to implement SEL in the, in the classroom, then we have that level. So as the Title IV grant expands with every iteration, then we're able to add another layer of the work. But really seeing, you know, what works the best is kind of where we are right now.
So in essence, you're waiting to see if you can then do another cycle for certification?
That is our intention, to do another cycle for certification over the summer. We will begin writing the Title IV grant for fiscal year twenty-five in April. That, those fundings should be available by July one. And we will be rolling out, it is our intention to roll out another cohort of those to be certified. But just with the knowledge of the fact that everyone who went through the Self-Paced Course may not have an interest to take three semester-long courses.
And they, for the certification, they get their graduate cred, the two graduate credits as well, right? Is that different?
I'll let Dr. Coles speak to that.
So for the fully certified staff, they get six graduate credits. So for those taking just the asynchronous course, they receive two graduate credits, but the fully certified is six. And to answer just a couple of your other questions quickly, which grade levels, it looked, they are even across the board. I do see like a strong affinity to middle school educators. So there are quite a few middle school educators who have signed up and that are engaged in the program. And as far as differentiation, absolutely yes. What I love about the program is that it is really practically designed. So educators are designing and submitting resources for evaluation based on their own classrooms. And then they are able to share those resources with colleagues. So there's, so PGTPS is building their own resource bank of SEL strategies, SEL tools that other educators can also use.
Thank you.
Board member, who's a Strata?
I think, thank you so much, Chair Miller. And thank you, everyone, for the excellent presentation. And I, I do want to acknowledge what Dr. White was saying about the, I think for years, the board was always so curious about how all of this happens. And thank you for bringing visibility to it. I have one somewhat detailed question, and then the next one is much broader. But what I was thinking about is when I was a, you know, became a parent in the schools, I often, around issues of students and, and behavior in the classroom, and I often hear the term classroom management skills of a, of a teacher. And I was wondering, what, how are, when you're training for SEL, what's the similarities and what's the differences between that sort of terminology? Like, how, you know, how is this adding to classroom management? Or is this two totally different things?
Could I add, as someone that trains teachers? So I think it, it's more helpful because you're teaching them about self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, and relationship skills. So I think it's just feeding into what we already do. But it's a gentle reminder of, you know, you, you really have to check yourself first and your emotions and your feelings. And, you know, it, it, it really is helping with those strategies. So I was trying to think of an example. I may focus heavily on relationship skills because teachers sometimes forget that, you know, that's the, the first process before you can actually teach anything, is building those connections and those relationships. So classroom management immediately comes once you're building those relationships.
And then I would add a layer to that. The socio-emotional learning platforms that you saw teaches children how to self-manage. And so when you look at some of the, some of the pieces under self-management and self-awareness, emotional regulation is one of those, emotion, learning emotional literacy. What are the emotions that I'm feeling as a student? And then how do I self-soothe or self-manage my emotions? And so when we see students who do not go through that process, you may see a student who is choosing to fight or choosing not to use their words and, and maybe show aggression or solve their issues in a way that's non-productive. And so when we look at what we want to happen in our school system as it relates to culture and climate of our schools, children feeling safe in our classrooms, and then looking at the disciplinary and behavioral referrals that go down when our students learn how to respond and not to react to conflict, then we start to see safer learning environments and places where children want to be. And so that, those are some of the pieces that, you know, play into how classroom management becomes less of a need when we give students the skills and information that they need to show up as productive citizens right in the classroom. So.
And I'd like to, as a classroom teacher, I'd like to address this as well. The way I see it, classroom management is about managing the class in the moment. SEL is about giving the students the lifelong skills that will hopefully eliminate, destroy, never to be created again, that school-to-prison pipeline. They, statistics have shown, and Dr. Coles, you, you know this as well because this is part of our Mount Holyoke program, that when teachers or, or when students are taught SEL skills, even as young as, as pre-K, it reduces the community housing projects that we need to have. It, it reduce, it creates more, more opportunity for going on for better careers, creates more opportunity for students to graduate high school. So for me, as a classroom teacher, while SEL definitely helps with classroom management, I see classroom management in the moment and SEL as a lifelong skill.
Could I just add one of my favorite things from the beginning course, from the Mount Holyoke course? I have carried these everywhere with me. They were in my car. I made my children bring them to me. So this is one of the activities we did first, if you can see it, the how am I feeling emotion cards. And it says, this develops emotional literacy. And by the way, it's Women's History Month. They're women-owned, the individuals that created them. But we had these cards in class. I take them everywhere. So you're reading the emotions of this fruit or vegetable. And on the. And on the back, it says, does this apple seem cheerful or fearful? So we're we're looking at other individuals or an apple's emotions and and reading them. So I've used it with my teachers. And also, you know, many times when I share them, they order them immediately. So they have their own set to use with their students.
And I can also say that we used those cards last year with our special education behavioral support group. And the students would not allow me to teach them anything else until we used those cards. Um, so definitely something that I got out of um the Mount Holyoke program as well.
That's great. That's all very helpful um to me to understand those differences in the support um that this is providing. And like you said, it's like, it's two, two-way. It's not just one, one-way is what this is really doing. So it's really helpful. My, my next uh question is you, you, I think at least two of you started to kind of head there of what's been very much weighing on me as a board member right now. And I'm, and I particularly at the middle and high school level is I feel like we are a school system of two very opposed mess messaging going on right now. Like the, you know, the last five years, even through COVID was about, you know, we passed the equity policy, the trauma-informed school system, the around the whole child, the SEL, which we heard, you know, know way more about that trajectory tonight. Then there's the implicit bias, training and the book studies and the work out of uh, you know, Dr. David Reese, restorative practices, like all of this. But today, we're in an environment where I am hearing more and more of wanting a return to, you know, uh, d- disciplined practices following that that handbook. Um, you know, we have implemented weapons detectors. We um students, you know, students are experiencing even, you know, are saying that they fifty percent feel like there's, you know, bullying in the schools, nearly as many don't feel safe. And there's this return to, um, and I would say with the shock that I heard last week of a state's attorney declaring that we're going to arrest parents if our students are absent for five days or more. So I'm, as a board member, I am watching this, I'm living this play out in my communities and to um adding on with the communities I represent. Um, so how do we, how do we manage in this conflicting messaging environment? Um, you know, when I, you know, meet with students, uh, you know, the largest high school in my district, Northwestern High School, who describes even before we install the weapons detectors that they're, they feel like they're seen through like a criminalized view. But yet, but yet this is the opposite of that, and it's happening and it's working. So I I just want to share that that is a, that is a conflict that I'm living, that PTSOs that our middle schools are living. And I'm about to go into Northwestern High School tomorrow night to support our new principal with the relaunch of a PTSO. And so I know I'm going to hear this. And so that is something I would be very interested in some responses on tonight when Chair Miller approves the extra time that I've taken.
Yeah, I I would say, and Liz, you might have a different response. I do think that um for students, I think as adults, we all have to communicate that while ninety-eight percent of students are doing all the right things, are understanding, some of the other protections we put in place are for the one and two percent that are not. And so we will be negligent. It's not about the criminal of the child is doing the right thing, but we will be negligent not to put things in place. When we've seen around the country, things rise up. So I think you have to, we have to continue to talk to children about there are precautions that we have to put in place as a system to make sure our students feel safe, that our staff feels safe, because we know that our schools are the best place for students to be. But in the midst of that, we're going to also give you the skills to govern, monitor yourselves. Because our goal is that when you propel out of our district, that we've equipped you with tools to navigate your own personal self, to navigate yourself with your peers, to navigate how to talk to adults, to govern your emotions, to bring them back into alignment. And so I think it's two things playing together, not in opposition, but to make sure that our students are safe and secure at all times. One, that I can learn how to govern myself, and one that I know the adults around me are putting in place because they're looking at peer groups and restorative practices. But one that also will put our system in school in in safer conditions for those students who who choose, even though they're getting all of this richness, to not follow the rules. And I think that as adults, we have to continue, it's a, it's a good point that you bring up. And I think that Liz probably moving forward and probably with David, that we constantly have to to bridge the conversations and not have them as these isolated conversations. But but name it, be transparent and talk about the why and how they really are working in tangent, although we haven't been talking about them collectively.
The, thank you, Dr. White. I think um you, hearing you recognize that that gap um and that there could be better ways to to move forward, or at least for those of us and, you know, who are looked upon as leaders in the, you know, in the building or a board member who goes into the spaces. You already gave me a couple really great, great framing, right? And that is, that is something that I don't want to see this work diminished. The incredible, like, because it's diminished in the context of of what is getting, we're hearing more of. You know, the progressive discipline and, you know, the students should be removed from the building. Um, so I appreciate that. I would love, love to hear from others too.
Any more questions?
All right.
Um, no, but I was just going to say, I thought, I thought Dr. White did a great job um explaining um what she said. And I think the only thing that I would probably add to it is that while we have control over what happens in the schoolhouse, we also have to recognize that there's a lot coming from outside of the schoolhouse, society, the media, like all of these things that come into the schoolhouse that we don't necessarily, you know, teach students or make it a part of our environment. But then we have to find ways to deal with it and help our students to deal with it because it is their reality. Um, even though it's outside of our curriculum and it's outside of, you know, the things that uh we want to focus on in school. Um, and so I think just to double down, I think like it's not all or nothing. I think it has to be both, and it has to be a balance, and it has to be about meeting school communities, you know, where they are and just being realistic about how rapid society is changing and the information um that our children have access to in a way that they didn't, you know, ten years ago or twenty years ago. And um and really just trying to support everyone, to support our teachers, to support our students. And then I I was one of our teachers who said it, um, they both did a really great job. But this idea about relationships and so much of it is about building relationships because then I think when you have strong relationships from teacher to student, student to student, um, that's when, you know, conflict can be resolved in a peaceful way because there's relationships, you know, um at the base of everything. So I think this work is so mu- is is so very important, and I'm excited to see um the team share what they're doing and to see that, to show how comprehensive it is, right? It's not just a one-off, or it's not with some, how they're going through the different levels um with the training and how, you know, uh comprehensive the training is. And I just look forward to it continuing to grow and permeate throughout the system and really to see our children rising up, being equipped with these things because we know what our teacher uh turnover rate is in some places. And so that the kids are equipped enough that when they go to the next grade, maybe that teacher hasn't been through the training or the institute, but it could be the children who are really um pushing it forward from what they've learned from the year before. So and just excited. So thank you. Yeah, I definitely think the gap, one of the gaps we have is probably giving kids context. Like we make adult decisions in the best interest of kids, but don't talk them through really why we did it. Um, and so that, you know, thank you for that comment. I think, again, it's something that we can take back to our teams to look across, cross the vision, to talk about how do we, how do we begin to let kids know the why behind the things that we do that are really for them?
I'd like to touch on uh Ms. Buzer, Mr. Arthur's um question also briefly. Um, I heard a speaker who's an author from um from the DC area. And one of the things that she had said is that that is why the SEL work is so essential. Um, for generations, we have been, uh, and and forgive me what I'm about to say, but it's true. We have been criminalizing especially our black and brown students. And when um when we criminalize those students, that's what they grow up to learn to be. So it is essential that we are teaching them the SEL skills so that they do not feel criminalized, providing SEL um educators as well as um counselors in our schools so that what they are seeing is not constantly the police trying to attack them. Um, our kids need to know that we support them, that we care about them, and that they do not have to go down this path and that we listen to them. Like I was saying with with the student I said is my greatest teacher. Um, yes, he's a kindergartner, so we had plenty of year uh gears to hopefully change his way. But he strangled me when I, when I stopped him from running into traffic. Uh, this could have been a very dangerous thing. However, because of the relationship I've built with him, his brothers and sisters and his family as a whole, I have changed the framework of the entire family to to allow them to know that they have someone they, that that believes in them. So anytime that they feel, oh, well, I'm not important enough, they know they can come to my classroom and they have someone who believes in them, who knows they can do the right thing, who who doesn't see them as criminals just because they are black and brown children.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have one if Fasja, who's a Strava, can take over chair for a second.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, so this to me was just very, very eye-opening in terms of the depth in which you have covered um the whole child and really incorporating the SEL. And I think about, you know, as you talked about the data that you said seventy-five percent of the educators felt confident in incorporating SEL. I'm going to assume those are the educators who have gone through the training, correct? Yeah.
No, these are edu- partly, partly is our culture and climate survey results from our school system. So that is district-wide, any um educator who has taken the culture and climate survey. So we know mixed in there, we believe, are some of the teachers who are certified. But I think that there is a spread and a ground swell um where in SEL, people are becoming more comfortable with the topic. And even those who didn't participate in what we've done so far, we know, we've talked to many teachers who have just taken it upon themselves to, uh, you know, um, be trained, look into it, get resources and things like that. So I think it's a widespread type of thing across our district and not just through these particular courses. But that's across our district uh responses.
Amazing. A- and I wonder, and I know that it's hard to collect data on this because you cannot compare it to pre-COVID. Children came in differently after COVID. But I wonder if you start looking at the data of the classrooms where they're really comfortable in incorporating SEL, whether you start seeing a um decrease in the number of discipline referrals or, you know, and if they're doing it school-wide. I just wonder, and I know this would be difficult, but I'm uh difficult to collect because there there is no comparison point. You know, you're not really looking at the same child who came, who was there before COVID. But I just imagine how, you know, anyone who taught pre-COVID, had they had the SEL training and been able to incorporate com- incorporate instruction. So it's not just about having a course correct for the student, but it's almost like working with them because when you start seeing a pattern, I can imagine these teachers are really working with them to get them to that responsible decision-making where they they they're intentional about thinking about, oh, yeah, maybe I should have instead of it being a course correct from the teacher. So now the student is actually internalizing what they should be doing. So, you know, I I I don't, I can't say um how, you know, excited I am to see and learn about this. I actually heard about it from um friends who are in the system. And they kept saying, we have SEL, uh, but but now just listening to the depth at which they're trained and what they're doing in the classroom. I can't imagine what data you could collect. And I don't know whether Dr. Jean uh Snell from University of Maryland is looking at something like that.
Dr. Miller, thank you for giving me an opening because I was just thinking Dr. Faison and Dr. Wyatt and Dr. Davis, like, wow, maybe that's going to be one of our next PDSA cycles. Let's think about the interface between how these SEL Academy grads are bringing the strategies forward and what sort of effect that's having on school discipline uh referrals. And so again, the wonderful thing about PDSA short-cycle testing is that we can start with a small test in some specific and, you know, located spaces that then informs the learning of the district to then kind of make these scaling decisions. So, you know, we we are committed to being here uh as your partners in sort of facilitating this, this learning and whatever ways we can be helpful to that process.
Thanks, Dr. Snell. And one thing I would just add to that um is what was hopeful for us is the existing research um that's pretty new around SEL and the outcome in the classrooms um for those educators who are using it to talk about the impact um that they've seen on discipline and behavior um and things like that. And so I would love to bring, you know, this conversation, you know, forward in our learner recovery um so uh improve improvement science work.
This is, this is really great because I, you know, I know the Castle website was probably the, the, the heart, the most hit website during COVID by every school district I can imagine. But one of the things that they talked about was how impactful it is when it's not done in isolation. And here's the, this is actually the first example that I've seen where it's actually incorporated, not school-wide, but system-wide, where it's not just one thing where we're going to do SEL right now. It's incorporated within daily instruction. So kudos. Um, board member, Lasai, Frazier, Frazier?
I just have a wondering, um. I know that we're doing it as a school district, and I think that that's amazing. I think that that's the way to go. Every grade level, every staff person should be trained in SEL, SEL. And our students need to build that common language. But I'm wondering, have we considered having SEL-specific academies programming for alternative programming for students that may need that high-intensity curriculum shift? Um, we were just talking about um how some of our students are black and brown boys specifically, maybe targeted and criminalized. Um, have we considered having programming like this that's very specific to SEL for students that may, uh, we may be considering other, other paths?
That's a really good question. And I would say most recently, um, because of the fentanyl um crisis that we experienced last year, we began searching for things um that would be a drug prevention and treatment piece. Um, in so doing, we came across BASE seven mindsets. And what we liked about BASE is that it allows students to take an assessment, and then it would guide students into what modules they needed to now take. Um, BASE did not just have drug prevention um and informative um videos for students. It also has a SEL piece, and it has a mental health and wellness component to it as well. And so we will be implementing BASE seven mindsets in our alternative schools as well as our high schools. And so we'll get a chance to see how it really is impactful for those students um at the secondary um grade levels. But we will be looking more closely, um, as you've referenced, the alternative schools and students who really um need maybe more intensive training um as well as mental health support and wraparound services and academic interventions um and things like that. So thank you for the question, and it's something we'll keep our eye on as we roll out BASE seven mindsets.
Thank you. Yes, I'm thinking more. Thank you. Yes, I'm thinking more of those tier-three um systems to support students that really need that high dosage of relationship-building SEL mindset. Uh, I'd be very interested in possibly looking at how we can even test out it maybe in a learning community. Um, so keep me informed of how I can support.
The one thing I would want to add is that we did um use this last cohort for SEL um as a strategy in response to chronic absenteeism because one element, um when looking at absenteeism is that relationship. And so there were about seven to 10 schools that we identified where the numbers were rather high. And those principals and IDs um were invited. And several, I need to get that number of how many um of those teachers from those schools um were, um have enrolled in the class because that's going to be a part of one of our strategies that once they've had this training, then we'll be able to continue um developing those teachers, investigating and supporting them to be able to see if just getting, starting to improve just that relational component that's housed within um SEL, how we're able to leverage that as we build greater capacity to cause children to want to come to school because of the fact that they've been able to connect. So no, we may not have implemented um in that direction as you're speaking to. Um but we have used it in a strategic way to be able to combat um at least one area um in that being uh chronic absenteeism.
Thank you.
And lastly, I would say we have begun having more intensive conversations under Dr. Davis's leadership regarding schools that need um are in need of support. Um and so we, we're going to, um, we've been attending meetings for those schools that have been identified as needing um um additional support and then having our team to determine what supports are best fitting for these particular schools. What can we do, hearing the data, seeing the need, and then making a determination around now what can we do to prescribe something that is just for this particular student population? I think the good thing about our team is that we're able to look at the restorative approaches that really is intended to repair harm and build relationships, looking at the positive behavior intervention strategies and helping schools, you know, look at what are tier-one, tier-two and tier-three, you know, strategies that we're implementing across the building um as a whole. And then being able to build and sell and then using um, you know, mental health resources as well as the substance abuse um clinicians that we have just brought on board and then partnering with, you know, community schools. So really having a bridge and working with the area offices um around all of this. So I think we sit, you know, really in a good place to be able to look at how all of it dovetails together. Um and then, um, you know, make determination around, you know, what, what population needs more or less.
So Ms. Lopez just gave me a time check and um it is past seven. And so I know we probably have more questions and would like to continue this discussion further. So Dr. Faison, we may be reaching out to you to just continue this conversation or send you additional questions via email. Uh, but thank you so much. And in her giving me the time check, she said, this is such a great presentation. Um, so I want to just thank everybody for being here and thank you for a great meeting. And I will um make, I'll have someone make a motion to adjourn. Oh, wait, before you do that, I forgot. Any follow-up items from January 20th, 22nd, 2024 are posted on board docs for you. And now we can make a motion to adjourn.
And make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hey, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We are adjourned at 7:05 PM. Thank you all and thank you again for such a great and informative conversation.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, team.
Thank you.